All right, I might call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bronson?
Present.
Counselor Hegi?
Present.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Here.
Counselor Osberger?
Present online.
All righty, we do the approve the consent agenda?
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Any questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Hegi?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Osberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
It's all approved. Uh, we're gonna do recognition of visitors and hearing petitions. And we have one of Frank Gallagher. You wanna come on up? State your name and address, please.
This word?
Yep.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, council members, uh, I'm Frank Gallagher.
Name and address.
Yes, I'm Frank Gallagher, and I live on First Avenue. Um, here to share some data with you that we have accumulated, uh, since the installation of the speed humps. Uh, I can start, uh, with the, uh, volume of traffic beginning seven twenty-nine to eight eleven, August eleventh. And the hourly average for that time was seventy-two vehicles an hour. The daily average was seventeen hundred and thirty-five. The total for that two-week period was twenty-four thousand, two-hundred and ninety-two vehicles. When still, we, we took it again, when school started up, at nine-three to nine-sixteen, hourly average was seventy-two vehicles an hour. Daily was seventeen hundred and twenty-eight. The total was twenty-four thousand, one-hundred eighty-seven. If we go back to April of two thousand or twenty thou- or twenty-twenty-four, the hourly average was seventy-five vehicles an hour. The daily was eighteen hundred and eleven. And the total was twelve thousand, six-hundred and seventy-four vehicles. That was April of last year compared to this year's data. So, we're not seeing any great changes there. I can move on to the speeds to show you what we may have accomplished there. The day after the speed hump were installed, the lowest speed we recorded was seventeen miles an hour, the highest was forty-six. On ten-sixth, October sixth, uh, we took a forty-five-minute survey, ninety-six samples. The median speed was like twenty-one miles an hour, the highest was thirty-one that we recorded. And so there was like a total of nine speeders at twenty-five and above for that period of time, for a forty-five-minute period of time. Uh, let me catch up with my notes here. And you can see in your handouts that there are, uh, different, same information I have here, I'm just doing it briefly, so that I know I'm on a time limit. For the twenty-seventh yesterday, we took sixty-four samples, the lowest speed we recorded were several of them at thirteen and fourteen miles an hour. The highest was thirty-one. There is some improvement there. Uh, probably about ten minutes after we left, we shut down. Uh, there was three vehicles went by, and apparently they were together and they were doing probably forty, forty-five easily. You could tell by the way they skipped over the humps. But anyway, um, the data indicates that they are somewhat effective. Uh, they may have accomplished, uh, some of the speed problems, but as far as the volume of vehicles, uh, there's no difference. Very little difference. And when you look at these, these numbers I gave you are averages. You, if you look at those, there are days when they're as high as nineteen hundred vehicles a day, uh, as low as sixteen hundred. But these are, these are daily averages, uh. So, uh, if there's any other information I can give you while I'm here, uh, be glad to do it.
Okay, well, we'll, uh, take a look at that. But thank you for coming, Frank.
I know there's been a lot of conversation about it, uh, some of it not so good and some of it even worse, so. But that's kinda where we're at with, with the data collection on it.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business?
Yeah, um, President Pro Tem Thorstad in council, welcome. And, um, what you have before you is an RCA. Um, I just wanna make a note here real briefly that under the background context, the second paragraph there, there's the wrong address uh, in that, but on, in the title and then below correct address. So the correct address is, uh, it's actually eighteen eighty-nine Cal Maya Street. So, and it's in that RCA at least twice. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then after I present this, we have, uh, three individuals, uh, in the back who, um, requested, uh, public comment, um, regarding this action. Uh, so what you have before you this evening is a code compliance abatement lien for eighteen eighty-nine Cal Maya Street. In the background context section of the RCA, as I said, we had the wrong address, uh, in there, but, um, it's, uh, we have the correct address at least two different times. As you all know, we've done these before, these cases are never easy because they involve, uh, real people, real challenges. However, the city does have a responsibility to uphold its codes consistently, uh, to protect the public health and safety and ensure the taxpayer funds are used fairly and responsibly. Um, under Sweet Home Municipal Code eight point zero four, when the city must abate a public nuisance, the costs incurred are first billed to the property owner. And if the owner does not pay within thirty days, council may authorize that amount to be recorded as a lien on the property. And so tonight's request essentially is, uh, to authorize that lien in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine-hundred and six dollars and forty-nine cents to re- to recover the cost of abating ongoing, uh, public nuisances at that location. Uh, so a little bit of, uh, violation background, uh, that location at eighteen, uh, eighty-nine Cal Maya Street is owned by Leslie Huerta Fernandez, has a history of chronic code compliance issues that date at least all the way back to twenty-twenty. Um, documented violations include nuisances affecting public health, abandoned appliances and fixtures, open storage of household goods, uh, a discarded vehicle, uh, declared a public nuisance, uh, prohibited or unsafe structures on the property. Uh, just so you know, code enforcement staff has worked with the property owner to seek voluntary compliance, uh, to avoid enforcement action. And so we, I just can't, I think that's important for council to know. So some of the, uh, timeline of events, uh, for this last couple of years, in October of twenty-twenty-four to March twenty-twenty-five, code enforcement staff conducted multiple site visits, uh, issued verbal and written warnings. And so during this period, staff provided repeated opportunities for voluntary cleanup and extensions to avoid penalties or abatement. March of this year, in twenty-twenty-five, a fire occurred at the residence and Sweet Home Fire, uh, District responded, uh, reporting significant difficulty accessing the structure due to the amount of debris and materials stored on site. Obviously, this incident underscored both safety and access issues. Uh, later that spring, um, staff did delay, um, some abatement to ensure some budget compliance. And then in July tenth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, a final notice of abatement was mailed to the property owner and fiscally po- physically posted on the property. Uh, this notice gave the owner until July twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, to completely clean up the property voluntarily. Uh, July twenty-fourth of this year, um, significant improvements were not observed, the city contracted for and completed an exterior abatement of the property. And then on August twelfth, the final invoice was mailed to the property owner in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine-hundred and six dollars and forty-nine cents, reflecting the contractor's cleanup cost and the city's, uh, administrative fee. And the owner was given thirty days to remit payment. September twelfth of this year, a thirty-day payment, uh, period expired without payment or communication from the owner. And then on October twenty-first, the city issued a certified, um, a, a notice informing the property owner of the city's intent to present this lien request, uh, to council, uh, to, for tonight's meeting. At each step, proper notice was provided, documentation has been retained in the case file. And I just wanted to note, just for context here, that the city's abatement program is funded by general tax dollars. So when the city performs abatement on private property, we essentially spend the public funds to resolve a private problem. The lien process is how we recover those costs, not immediately, but when a property sells or refinances. Uh, without placing the lien, these public funds would remain uncovered indefinitely, reducing the resources available to address other public or other, uh, problem, properties. Again, this is not, um, not a punitive measure, it's a financial safeguard and legal obligation under our municipal code. Again, I just wanna say we know that, uh, these situations often involve hardship and staff has made every effort to work with the property owner to avoid this outcome. But at the end of the day, we have to ensure that the city's actions are consistent, fair, and fiscally responsible to all, uh, the residents. Uh, council has three options, uh, this evening, and staff is recommending, uh, option two, to, uh, recover those costs and place the lien in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine-hundred and six dollars and forty-nine cents on that property. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and we also have, um, three individuals who also wish to provide some public testimony regarding this.
Any discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. Why weren't there any pictures provided in the packet?
I did not have any pictures with us, um, but I can, we can do that in the future. I don't have any tonight, though.
That would be good, thank you.
Any other questions? Just going here, um, the public comment?
Yeah, public comment.
Yeah. All right, so, uh, Kim Bowman, if you wanna come up? Go ahead, have a seat, and then, uh, just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Kim Bowman, I reside at nineteen oh-three Cal Maya Street. We have neighbors between us and eighteen eighty-nine Cal Maya. However, we have visual impact, uh, to eighteen eighty-nine. And, um, we, I have some, um, facts I would like to state and some concerns about the, um, help that the city did. If you go back to the property now, you can hardly tell that they were there. It's back to almost the way it looked before they came. Uh, so that's the first testimony I wanna say. The neighborhood is a nuisance, we can't walk on that side of the street, it's very unsafe. Most days, they have stuff streamed down the road, they do pick it up out of the road every night, but you can't park there and you have to drive around most time. Um, there's strong environmental hazards that recently have come to my attention, I didn't focus on originally, but in the last two weeks, I've noticed the neighborhood cats are bringing rodents under all our porches and leaving them there. So I'm worried about infestation. My neighbors, um, one of who will be testif- or talking today, husband is very ill, and when they burn these fires in the backyard, it's very, um, hazardous to his health. He's an elderly gentleman, they can't open their windows. It's very toxic smelling, we can actually smell it in our house and can't open our windows either. So I worry for them more so than us. I'm very worried about the fires that they burn at night because winds can blow and our house can catch on fire. So that's a big, strong concern for me. Um, and more importantly, I still work, and so having fire and police come in the middle of the night with their loud trucks wakes me up and then I'm grumpy for work. So that seems to be a weekly, sometimes every other week occurrence these days for the fires that are burning in the backyard. It's, again, very unsightly and unsafe, and I just feel like the council should be aware of this. It's been ongoing for many years, I think even before twenty-twenty. And it was so helpful to see the city come in and help, and it was so sad to see that help wasn't taken advantage of, but it's gone back to where it was, so that's all I'd like to say. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Uh, well, let's go with, uh, Fred Bowman. Right, and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Fred Bowman, I reside at nineteen oh-three Cal Maya. That was my wife that just spoke and pretty much summarized the facts that I also, uh, witnessed. We were very thankful that the city came in and, uh, cleaned up the place, and we were actually starting to take positive notes at that point, like maybe this might work out, but, uh, like my wife said, it's kinda returned back to the same, uh, situation where the, the front yard's completely full. I, I haven't really looked in the backyard, but like my wife said, uh, the cats in the neighborhood go out and catch rats and mice over there and bring them back and eat them in our yard. There's still abandoned vehicles in the area, and, uh, I, I feel that the house is in disrepair. There's just, I don't even see how you could fix the structure of the house. And from that standpoint, I think the occupants trying to live in it was, uh, would be in a very unsafe situation trying to reside in that house, so, uh, that's all I have.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yep.
And next one, I think I can read this, Tony? Tony?
I get there. I'm Toni Hetzen. I live at eighteen ninety-seven Cal Maya. My property, or the property that I rent from my landlord, is an L shape around Leslie's property, and I have been living there since, I don't know when. And I walked through there, you had a code officer named Tom. I walked around there and I showed him what was happening back there then, before it got so bad. There was pictures taken then. The odors are so bad that I can't open my windows. My house is on one side of the fence, and the fence, the property fence is six feet away from my bedroom window. Landlord put brand-new windows in, I've never been able to open them, it smells so bad. Yeah, that's it. That's it there. And, um, like Kim said, my husband is seventy-three, he has bad lungs. There's times we can't open the back door for fresh air, cuz it smells so bad, fires at night. It's just, I, I'm, see where the white car is cockeyed? I'm that house. That's, my house wraps around her backyard. And that's what it looked like before they cleaned it up. And when they, you guys got done cleaning it up, it was great. I even told Leslie, this looks really good, Leslie. And I talked to her about a limb that, that was on my, it's on my side of the property. I said, I'll take care of it, I'll get rid of it. If you'll finish taking it off the tree, which they did, they knocked it, finished knocking it off. Now I gotta live up to my promise. And it does, it's, it's not that bad yet, but it's headed that way. Oh, yeah. Now, thank you guys for letting me.
Thank you for coming.
Save my say.
So we need a motion?
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Any discussion?
One, one item I just wanna verify for the record, is the, is the property owner present tonight?
Uh, the property owner is not present.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's clear that, um, that there was an opportunity to speak just like the other, uh, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No discussion? Okay, go for it.
Have we done all the proper notifications? Do we have evidence of that, that that's been done the proper way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? I'm hearing none. Go ahead and do a roll call. Or vote, I mean, sorry.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Osberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hegi?
Yes.
Seeing seven i's and no n's, uh, it's gonna pass. What's next, uh, ordinance, huh? Oh, yeah. Mayor Coleman's gone.
So the next item on the agenda is just the third reading of ordinance bills, and I will read it by title only. Ordinance Bill number nine for twenty-twenty-five, ordinance number one, three-three-eight, and ordinance amending the official zoning map.
So we need to do a third reading? By title only?
Uh, no, the third reading has been done, now is the time for, uh, actually adopting the ordinance.
Okay. Cause it says right here, third reading of ordinance bills. Roll call vote required, so.
Sorry, to clarify, uh, city manager Ogden just did the third reading by title only, which was voted on at the last meeting to conduct that third meeting at this meeting, and so the next vote needs to be a, uh, the actual adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, so we do a vote for the adoption? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to recuse myself from the discussion and vote, please.
Okay. We do roll call.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Osberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hegi? Oh, sorry, you recused. Um, Counselor Richards?
Uh, yep.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
All righty, so we have five, well, actually four. One has sounded and one absent. Motion passes, right?
Sorry.
Uh, what's next? Uh, reports of committees? Any? I'm hearing none. Department reports?
On the, uh, PD front, just a couple of things, we've moved, uh, code enforcement back to the PD. Jennifer Gaspert, who was our part-time CSO, is now our code enforcement officer. Uh, she started this week and she's excited about this, uh, new role, and we're excited to have it at the PD. Uh, another note, uh, PD-related is I submitted for a, uh, grant, uh, through the Lynn County Emergency Telecommunications Assistant Program. Uh, they have a hundred thousand dollars available, um, and obviously there's many agencies that are gonna be putting in for this, but nonetheless, I asked for the full amount, um, and hopefully we get some, uh, to replace our aging, um, uh, radio, uh, repeater tower up on turbine, and to also, uh, put in a, uh, generator system up there so that when the power goes out, we can run it up there, um, so that the generator automatically, uh, turns on. Uh, currently, we have a little portable one up there that we have to go start. But anyway, uh, the company that, that we, uh, work with said that the equipment's coming to the end of life, and so we're just planning for the future, and, uh, hopefully we hear back from the grant within the next couple of months. And that's it for PD.
The library would like to mention that we have a little free pantry going on in our lobby area, um, cuz we know there's some food insecurity changes coming up on multiple different levels, so we are, and today we got a donation of a small refrigerator freezer, so we can take perishable, um, donations now. Um, this is items donated by the community for the community. Even if you just have one can that you'd like to donate, you can stop by and drop that off. If you just need one can of something, you're welcome to take it. This is just to supplement the food banks in town.
Anyone else? No mayor's report because, uh, she's homesick. Um, any council business good with the order?
I have a city manager.
Oh, I missed you.
That's okay. That's right. I just have a few things to highlight for council. Um, the e-recycling event that occurred this Saturday was a huge success. A lot of people came and took, uh, part of that, and in fact, it was so successful that, uh, they had to shut down early because they filled up, so it was great. Thanks for the public showing up to that. Um, just a reminder, leaf pickup season is underway, and if you need, uh, leaf collection, um, you, you can go to our social media, they have all the information on how to contact Public Works for that. Uh, they do that Monday through Friday, and, uh, if you call in, um, there's, it's not a guarantee that they'll come out that day, but you'll be on a list and, uh, they will get there eventually. Uh, and then here next month, uh, on the twenty-ninth of November, uh, mark your calendars for the tree lighting here, uh, at City Hall. We look forward to doing that. And then finally, um, just a reminder that since we only have one council meeting next month, we ended up, um, council ended up pushing that to November eighteenth, which is the third Tuesday, so just throwing that out as a reminder at six-thirty PM. That's all I got. The twenty-ninth is the tree lighting, and council is on the eighteenth. Yeah.
Any council business good with the order?
Chair Thorstad, may I? Okay. So I just want to share the same concerns that Director Daisy had. I have been really, um, distraught over the last few weeks about this SNAP benefit issue. Um, I'm really upset that we can't, as a council, discuss this crisis that we might face upon our community. And so I took it upon myself I took it upon myself to go to the county commissioners today and give public testimony. I've done a lot of research um about the statistics. We, as a city in the school district, have a forty-six percent of our population receiving SNAP benefits. That's almost one out of every two people, primarily children, seniors, and disabled people, where politics, as usual, are playing with their bellies. They need to have food. They need to be fed. And so, um, again, I'm very sad that we, as a city council, can't address this. It was on the agenda, and it's no longer on the agenda. Um, but the county commissioners are working very hard and very diligently to see if they can secure food and resources for our community. There's five food banks and food closets in town. Um, two of them you have to be members of. One of them, you can go shopping. They're open all the time. I'm gonna try to put out some sort of information about where to go. Um, and I believe that the county commissioners are going to come through with a lot of resources here in a short order because some SNAP recipients haven't been receiving their food stamps for the last two weeks. And some of them, most of them, won't get anything for the Thanksgiving holiday if the federal government can't figure this out. Um, I am pretty disappointed that the governor hasn't called an emergency session with E-Board uh convening with the Rainy Day Fund because she can backfill this. Um, but I do want to let the community know that we, as a community, are going to take care of our local community regardless of what politics, as usual, is doing. So, thank you.
Any other business for the good order there? I'm hearing none. We're gonna adjourn this meeting at seven o'clock.